Are we on? Yeah. Judy Walker, does this sound right back where you are? Good, good, good volume level. All right. Like go ahead and call the regular meeting of the city of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for September 5th, 2024 to order. Let the record show that all council members are present for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out a yellow comment card, you'll find them on the table by the entryway. Please hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. Uh, we do have public hearings on a zoning action and then uh, we also have just a regular public comment period. So if you're commenting on something other than the zoning, please make sure that that's clear. If you're a comment on the zoning, make sure that that's clear so that you get called at the right time. Uh, if everybody would, please make sure that the ringer is off on your cell phone. I will call you out if your phone rings. And if you would, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands. There's some more seats up here on the side too, if you need. Lots of folks in the room. Good to have you here. Uh, it's good to have people here every time. Good to see the things happen. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Uh, we had talked about adding a executive session to talk about a real estate issue. Was there anything else that we needed added tonight? Uh, if not, can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt the amended meeting agenda?
Like the motion to adopt the amended meeting agenda?
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting the amended meeting agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, that stands adopted. Next up is approval of the meeting minutes from the regular council meeting of August 6th, 2024. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve those minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from last month. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about those? Anybody need anything added or changed? If not, all those in favor of adopting those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Those minutes stand adopted. We don't have any presentations or presentations at this meeting, so the next item on the agenda is public comment. General public comment, which is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council. Provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing during tonight's meeting. Again, we do have other public hearings tonight, so please be sure you specify. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council. First stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Do you have any public comment in general?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Laurie Searle.
Side road. Um, I want to thank Chattahoochee Hills and Georgia Department of Transportation for completing the New Garrett's Ferry Bridge that opened today. It was a long time in coming since 2017 when Fulton County closed it. And uh, through some citizen volunteer support, we actually found an opportunity to get a free bridge. And then the city just ran with it and stayed on Georgia DOT and got it done. And it's a beautiful thing. So thank you very much. I want to call on that same sort of citizen volunteer effort to help our council in our city reevaluate our RL rural district. When I moved here in 1997, we just started the process for a scenic byway. And this was 10 years before the city incorporated. And at that time, the community expressed the vision for the Parkway to remain rural in nature, to provide enhancements and protection at a green space and community resources along the roads. And to discourage land use adjacent to the roadways deemed incompatible with the rural character of the area. What has happened is we've gone a long way for doing that. But the still problem is that the RL district is a placeholder for future development of 100 acres and above. So essentially, if you have 200 acres, you can build a hamlet pretty much anywhere in the RL district. And there is preservation that goes along with that. But that still chips away at our rural character and our heritage by adding the additional population. I know that there's um, issues with property rights, constitutional issues in Georgia issues. And what I'd like to call on our citizens to help our council with is spend a couple hours each week. We know there's a problem. Everyone on the council has identified the problem. Let's help them find a solution rather than just complain about it. Do a little research, find out what other cities have done without getting in trouble, without um, hindering someone's property rights because what we ask of the developers, we also ask of ourselves. If we're going to deny someone an application that meets our zoning, that could happen to us as far as building a home too. So we need to find a happy medium and help our elected officials. So they have a little bit more help other than getting through your 260-page council package each month. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Laurie.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, it's one of those things too, while, while we've got a room full of people, uh, we're going to be having a cop plan update, our, our every five-year cop plan update starting next year. So challenge right now for every member of this year to come to those meetings. Uh, that's the place that we get to make the most uh, impact on, on kind of that community vision of how it's going to be in the future. Next up, our staff reports, and we will start with a financial update from the city manager.
Hey, hey, good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. Good to see you again after the work session. And, and again, like the mayor said, uh, great crowd. Love to see citizens come out to these meetings. It, it just shows that the community uh, cares about the city and cares about the direction of the city. In regards to what you're hearing in the sound, I just want to make a quick housekeeping announcement. We've been struggling a little bit with the sound system. You hear some static. So uh, next month, the people that installed it are coming out and they're going to run it with the meeting so they can experience what we're experiencing. And the better news for those that come up for public comment, the camera up there is not there, is under warranty and it's not working. So you won't be on, I'm not on camera. That's back in my head. So, so if you feel better, if you feel like you don't like to be on camera, you're not on camera tonight. So the mayor and council are. Um, but we got a busy night. Just want to talk real quick about the finances. Um, I've got two documents. I did that. I did two for a reason. I always like to pull out like our reserves so I can see, all right, where are we at with revenue generation for this time of year? Cause we were at about 16.4% of the fiscal year and we collected about 9.5% of the revenue. But don't let that, you know, trouble you or anything like that, because you know, we, we don't collect that much revenue this time of year. It is what it is. But one thing I like to point out is always, I put that percentage thing on the outside. Like I said, well, where are we over, where are we under and stuff? And you'll see where it is under um, intergovernmental L-M grant, we're 226% over as far as revenues. We collected more. Reason being is we heard that the state was giving out more local maintenance improvement grant money, $200,000. So we applied for it and we got it. And we didn't budget for it because you don't know you're going to get it. So that money is going to go two roads. Um, but as far as the rest of the finances, um, everything, we're on track with everything. And what was mentioned, real briefly, at the, uh, the last council meeting, I mentioned, probably shouldn't have mentioned it because I'm putting me on a timetable. It's in the minutes that I have a new thing called ClearGov that we've acquired and it's going to create a digital budget book. In the presentation that the mayor did earlier in the work session, it showed a lot of graphs and charts and comparisons and such. And it shows you where we were a year ago to our ClearGov is going to show that information. So it's a digital budget book. We have a static budget book, about 122 pages. I don't know anybody that's read it or wants to read it. It's online. Yeah, all of our financial statements from 2008 are online. All of our budgets that have been done um, since I've been here, the budget documents are online available for review. And so this digital budget book is going to be so much easier because maybe you don't want to go scroll through all those pages. You want to click on police, you want to click on fire, you want to click on uh, debt service, whatever. And you can do it and all those charts and graphs are going to be there. So the reason why I have a self-imposed deadline of the September 30th, because we have 90 days, a day of our budget adoption, to submit it to the GFOA Government Finance Officer Association to seek the distinguished budget presentation award. They'll give us an extension. I don't like to do that. Um, so I'm giving myself and imposing that deadline on myself. So that digital budget book, once we get it uploaded and done, it'll be on the website. And uh, I hope it's, it's for you guys. It's for the mayor, council, and the citizens. And I think it's going to be a great uh, opportunity for you really have a deeper dive into the budget, a much easier dive to the budget. But as far as the financials, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about where we're at today. Again, we're not too far in the fiscal year, so it's not much to report.
I appreciate what you're saying about the, the more information online. I was talking in the meeting earlier about a uh, a planning thing that I was uh, invited to at Strong Towns, where they're looking at a budget uh, decoder. It's like a citizen-focused budget decoder. I was helping them set that up. Uh, we're one of the cities that is kind of volunteered to be one of the best dummies for that. So as soon as that's available, we'll be able to put our stuff in that as well. Um, good for, you know, again, being able to dive into the budget more deeply and understand where the money's coming from, where it's going to and all that. Thanks, Robbie. Sir. We, we get budget awards every year because of what a great job Robbie does in organizing all of that. Next up is a fire department report from Chief Brett Brett.
I remember seeing that side of you.
Mayor Council. He'll be here all week.
The blow hanging for the um, report for the month of August activities and the fire EMS and emergency management. Uh, you have for you, we have copies on the side here for uh, all attending. I just want to get two things very quickly, if I may. I think there's a little bit of uh, memory loss about the burning ban and some have thought, oh, September 1st, let's go. But it lasts until September 30th. Okay, just in case you're mixed up about that, remind you, the burning ban uh, is um, imposed by the Georgia Department of Environmental Protection. And uh, it's our obligation to enforce that. The other thing to mention to you has to do with our Grady uh, partnership. Um, I've said this before, but I have had other communications this week. Uh, and of course, wrote correspondence on behalf of Grady to encourage the development of the freestanding trauma facility. If some of you haven't heard it, I know this group here is, so forgive me if I speak more in this direction. But what you have is Grady's proposal to uh, develop a trauma, an emergency facility at South Fulton Parkway and Highway 92 of Hamilton Fair. So that in a way brings another resource further south into South Fulton. And especially at an important time when we've seen two major hospitals that serve Fulton County close within the last couple of years. So um, I did write a letter uh, requesting uh, that the uh, state support their request for that uh, certificate of need. And um, given any opportunity to speak on behalf, I hope any of you would do that as well. Um, here's perhaps an, an equally important uh, opportunity uh, or, or improved uh, strength out of Grady. Uh, we learned week before last that they were dedicating four more ambulances to South Fulton, to the 911 emergency operations. And I'm telling you that I have since that news, seen those ambulances in effect. Uh, that means we now have a total of 14 serving all of the South Fulton sector, if you will, which is really everything south of East, at East Point and south. But in the last few weeks, we've actually seen for the first time Grady units posted here at Fire Station 51.
Which is our fire station.
That's our fire stations. And yeah, and then there are at uh, on a regular basis in their posting plan, postings that occur in uh, Palmetto. And occasionally up near Ridge Road, if you're familiar with the northern end, where uh, uh, South Fulton County Station 8 is. Uh, just today, there was a posting of a unit at Station 51. And I'm sorry, but I just am cutting little notches in the bars though, because I'm so proud to hear those improved services. But that um, that really is the the report I have. If I can answer any questions or add anything more, I'm happy to.
Rick doesn't take as much credit for that as he should, because a lot of that happening down here is because Greg, man, in his leadership role with the South Fulton Fire Chiefs has been driving that. And uh, we've had several meetings with the chiefs and the mayors on the south side. And there's been a lot of pressure on Fulton County and Grady to make that happen. And this is what happens when you push. So.
Chief Brett, quick question. 14 now, about how many? About, I don't know, 10 years ago? Just for comparison purposes, to see where we're at.
Yeah, with AMR uh, holding the zone service uh, agreement at that time, a total of four, but routinely in our end of the county. Um, only two that you could count of and response times from dispatch to scene uh, as much as an hour or more. Today, we are down to about 14 minutes from dispatch to uh, transport on scene. And of course, to make sure everyone understands how to appreciate all, the whole picture. When that dispatch occurs, when that 911 call, our department immediately responds. So we're on scene hopefully in eight minutes or less. And we have advanced life saving um, capability so that we can, we can transport if we have to under exigent circumstance. But the skill level for our people uh, is good to mitigate any problems and/or stabilize patients until the transport occurs. How's that? Little extra.
Thanks, Greg. It's a
Not great.
Peanut.
You knew it was coming.
Uh, next up is a police department report from Chief Behu.
It's always tough following, Greg. Um, good evening, council, um, citizens. Uh, you have before you the monthly report. Um, yeah, a little slower month than, than what we've, than what we've seen in the police department, which for us is always a good thing. Um, again, like I spoke last month, we're still seeing unfortunately uh, fraud cases where people are calling and, and um, identifying themselves as law enforcement and people are saying that they're, they have warrants and paying in one case, $20,000 in cryptocurrency to someone over the internet. And so if, please tell your, and it seems like they're targeting the elderly. So please, please tell your, tell your loved ones. I said it last month, I'll say it again. Law enforcement will not call you if you have a warrant. Um, if someone, anyone calls you demanding money, hang up on them, call us. It's just, please, it's, it, don't um, especially if they're demanding that you pay me cryptocurrency, you know?
Or gift cards.
Or gift cards, you know? Uh, I mean, I, we laugh and joke, but uh, but it's serious, you know, in, in one. Because that money, especially it's, it's untraceable and that money's gone. And we can make a report, but that's, that's all we can do, especially because 99% of the time, these people are overseas and we can't do anything about it. So please tell your family, loved ones, if they're demanding money, cryptocurrency, gift cards, whatever, it's, it's just hang up, call us, make a report. Do not send money, you know, whatever. Um, anyway, uh, we did, I offered a conditional offer to uh, uh, Officer Jill Thompson. She's expected to start on September 23rd. Uh, we will have two extra positions, which we have six candidates uh, vying for those two positions. I'm anticipating we'll have two people hired in the next month or so, bringing us to full staff. Um, if you look out, well, you can't because all the stuff's in the way, but in the back of the parking lot, there are three brand-new vehicles as part of our fleet management system with our new striping on them. So after the meeting, if you'd like to look out there, there's three, uh, three of our brand-new vehicles are, are there. Um, so appreciate that. The others are hopefully coming. Uh, they're, they're being worked on and upgraded. So our entire fleet is being, being replaced. So we're looking forward to that. Other than that, that's what's going on in the police department this month. Any questions?
Kevin, I got one question.
Sure.
Last night you mentioned the enforcement of the cameras. Could you repeat that for everyone here?
Sure. I was going to go more into, yeah, I was going to go more into depth in that next month, but yeah, okay. Um, so, real quick. Next week, hopefully, the speed enforcement cameras in front of the school are going to be erected. Um, real quick, under Georgia law, as it is written right now, those cameras will be operational 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Which, that means that if you were caught speeding, doing more than 11 miles over the posted speed limit, you will receive a citation. Um, the only thing that is different is the time of day between the hours of 7:30 and 8:30 and 2:30 and 3:30. The, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour. At all other times, the speed limit is 45 miles an hour. So that means you have to be doing 11 miles over the speed limit. So between 7:30 and 8:30 and 2:30 and 3:30, you have to be doing uh, 36 miles an hour. All other times, it'd be 56 miles an hour. The ticket is administrative, not punitive, meaning that if you get a ticket, there's no points on your license, nothing gets reported to your insurance, um, because it goes to the owner of the vehicle, not the driver. You can contest the ticket. You will have to come in, you can, you can request a court date, you can come in, you will have to show proof to Judge Ross that you were not driving the vehicle and provide what's driving the vehicle. Um, but yeah, I'll go more into depth in it in October. Once the, once they are in place, um, uh, we will be putting out flyers and, and our social media and, and whatnot. Um, there's 30 days, once they're erected, the 30 days by Georgia law, the, the tickets have to be warnings. So it's not like as soon as they go up, start getting tickets, you know, and stuff like that. So I'll, I'll go more into depth into it next month when they're, when they're um, when they're up. It's so, yeah. Anything else?
Hey Kevin, how, how's the judge doing on our tickets? Is he giving us our money, chopping them in half? What's he doing?
As far as I know, and yeah.
I heard a lot of these big time truck tickets are going from 1103.
I mean, I'm not in court when he does them.
You don't know? Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Next up is a public works report from Director Wendland. Get ready.
Hello, everybody. Mayor, Council. You know, makes me put my chest out. Look at the good-looking people. Man, I'm telling you, I'm amongst some beautiful people. You hear me? It is what it is. Makes me feel good to serve here, y'all. I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, in my department, public works and parks, normal operations. Uh, if you notice, when y'all showed up in front of City Hall, all the clothes and, and the greenery was trimmed. Uh, I always give credit to the Dave Healy. He been working for me, left and came back. He runs, he works in my parks. And he does, he takes pride in what he does. I didn't even have to ask him to do it. He knows it's time of the year to do it. He done it. And he knew tonight was a meeting night. And he was really impressed this morning to get out there and get it done. So people can come in, see how beautiful City Hall can look when it's uh, maintained properly. Uh, you know, you got that look up there. Uh, let's see, what, what else I got right here? Uh, also out on Sardis Road, um, I've, when I first started here, I had a phone call. Um, there's a cross drain, a 36-inch cross drain that goes across road concrete. And it had started sliding away, I guess, from some of the heavy, heavy storms several years ago, it was never maintained. Uh, I've kept eye on it through the years. It just got to the point where we had to do something to not get into the road. So we hired a contractor crew to come out and redo the whole, not the whole cross drain. We had, did not have to get into the road because we caught it at the right time. But it's fixed and, and good. If so, residents ride down that road, uh, check it out. And it's uh, had a lady that was walking by when I was doing it. She's giving me the what for. She goes, my dog's going to be pissed because that's where my dog gets the water every time we walk. Uh, so I'm sorry, ma'am. I'd rather have a bed of cross drain. There you go. That's the word. Um, also got several calls on the striping that need to be completed on Cochrane Mill. Uh, Robbie and I have talked several times with them. But they come into the strip and they sent us a bill, said they were done. We said, no, you're not done. I guess the contractor contracted out the striping and they wasn't on the same page. So we have content and we thought they would be here this week to finish it up. But we are on their timeline. We just keep pushing them. It's all we can do. Uh, they're, they still have to go from Watkins Road to 70. And then a Cochrane Mill will be done. I know it's at this uh, school. A lot of people coming through that area of school when there's a lot of, having a lot of issues. The center line crosses in because there's no really to, to guide. So we're working on that. We're pushing them as hard as we can. Uh, that's what we are with all that. Y'all smile, man. It's beautiful. It's beautiful. Anything else from me? Y'all got any questions? I'm going to sit up here because Robbie's got it. Thank you so much, you all.
Um, next up is a city development report by directors.
Try to avoid providing chuckles. We have, um, you have in front of you the building permit uh, statistics for the last month. Um, 18 permits this month versus 15 a year ago, so up a little bit. Of those 18, only two were new homes versus four a year ago. So um, uh, new home building is, is down as it has been mostly recently. Um, uh, 207 inspections versus 188 a year ago. Um, the only other thing I have is planning commission meeting come out um, uh, next Thursday. That's a week from tonight at 6:30 PM. And we will have two items that are on uh, tonight's agenda for first read. Uh, the variance, proposed variance to allow grading in a buffer and the ordinance to amend the unified development code. Any questions?
Next up is economic development report from Chris Moxitius.
Uh, good evening, city council and residency friends from Chattahoochee. Um, my reports can be rather brief this evening. Uh, next month is going to be a lot more robust, but I do want to touch on a subject we've talked about for the last uh, couple of meetings, which is the weight-finding sign that we're working on with GDOT. Now, we had a collection of uh, personnel from GDOT to actually come out and do a site visit. We looked at the signs, uh, three in total that were installed in GDOT runway on Highway 70 without going through the proper permitting process. Uh, we were able to uh, more or less convince them, I guess it's probably a better word for that, but uh, that there, at least two of the three were actually installed properly according to GDOT standards. So they were actually satisfied with moving those four to get through the permitting process. We submitted plans to the district office uh, for all the remainder of the signs on Highway 70, including Riverdale Road, uh, Cochrane Mill, Rico and uh, uh, Campbell, Campbell Red One. Um, those have been reviewed by district staff and have been now forwarded up to the state office for final review. We're doing this process, what we call off-network, meaning that we're not actually in their um, in their computer software system on their, on their platform. So we wanted to go through and actually get everything approved and then put it into, into the actual system to, so it would streamline the process. But after three years of efforts, uh, we're a lot closer to the finish line. And uh, I think we're definitely in a much better position uh, to get this finalized in the next couple of months.
When, when they were out here, did we happen to get any update on the speed limit changes?
Of the what?
I'm not, no, I'm not. I'm not trying to be funny. I asked their little, uh, the, the girl that was here taking pictures today at the bridge, if she knew about that. Um, trying to find somebody at GDOT that actually cares about that. All right, thanks.
Sure, I was just wondering what you learned. It was that we have a PI number object which goes from Massachusetts Ferry to uh, the Phillips Road for the phase one or first leg of the trail system. And I've been following up with the Atlanta Regional Commission to see if they have any information on it. And if actually today followed it up with the District 7 office to see if they can give us an update. So trying to get that up and moving.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
That's it for those. Uh, tonight we have a couple of public hearings. Uh, Rick, you want to read the public hearing rules for us?
Each side equal opportunity to the floor and establish time limits for the public hearings. If you desire to speak in support of or in opposition to the item, you must fill out a public comment card and turn it in to me, the city attorney. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that speaker cards were received by me. All speakers should identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. In this case, each side shall have In this case, each side shall have thirty minutes.
Sounds good.
And each person will have a maximum of three and a half minutes to speak. The applicant and all those speaking in support of the application shall speak first. The applicant may choose to save some of the allotted time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Those opposing the issue shall speak next. If any time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut the final remarks made by the applicant. Following the presentations by the applicant, those speaking in support of and those opposing the application, the city staff shall present their position. City clerk will keep track of time and will inform you when your allotted time has expired. During the public hearing, members of the city council shall listen to the presentation made by all those who speak. No action on their part is in order until the mayor declares a public hearing complete. In addition, the applicant shall not submit new material to the city council during the meeting unless requested to do so by a council member. All material which the applicant wishes to be considered shall be submitted to the city planner prior to the meeting so that the material may be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. Finally, in a rezoning matter, the applicant and any person who desires to speak during the public hearing who has contributed campaign contributions totaling two hundred and fifty dollars or more to any member of the mayor and council shall disclose such contributions prior to speaking during the public hearing. Failure to disclose such campaign contributions constitutes a misdemeanor.
Couple of housekeeping things here, too. There was a error in a posting last month on the variance on the buffer thing. We had a couple of people out sick and just in the communication, something didn't get posted properly. One of the penalties of having a tiny little city, sometimes we don't have a lot of backup. Because of that, this is just a first read on that item. Because of that, we won't be acting on that item tonight. And in fact, because these things all go together, I'm recommending to the council that we defer action on both of these things and the Associate Development Agreement until next month. But because we're going to be talking about at least the variance thing next month again anyway, we've talked about the fact because there were some posts on this online, people might have been confused about whether to come talk tonight or next month. Next month, there wouldn't ordinarily be a public hearing, but I'm recommending that we add a public hearing next month as well, just in case there are people who didn't come tonight that wanted to see because they thought it wasn't happening tonight, and and give them that opportunity. The goal here is to hear from anybody that wants to talk. So just wanted to let people know that. Should we, let Mike give us a little description of the project first?
Right, he can describe, he just shouldn't give his opinion if he has a position.
So Mike, if you would give us the quick explanation of what we're hearing about today?
Sure, Mayor and Council, we've had, this is the fifteenth public meeting that has had this item on the, on the agenda, including planning commission meetings and city council meetings, many of which have also been public hearings. The proposal is for rezoning of five hundred and twenty-six acres at the corner of Cochrane Mill Road and South Fulton Parkway from R L Rural to V L Village. The proposal would include two thousand homes because of the way our zoning works, that would create demand for one thousand four hundred and seventy-four T D Rs, which would amount to a transfer of tens of millions of dollars from the development into the hands of rural landowners who are interested in preserving their property. The projects have been the subject of a D R I review, which is a state mandated developments of regional impact review that considers traffic and it lets neighboring jurisdictions know about the project. We also have before us an application, a new application for elimination and reduction of some of the buffers that would be required on the project. The normal rules would require three hundred foot deep buffer on South Fulton Parkway, one hundred and fifty foot buffer on Cochrane Mill Road. The proposal is to eliminate the buffer on Cochrane Mill Road south of South Fulton Parkway for a length of about twenty-two hundred feet, starting at the parkway and heading south. And to eliminate the buffer on South Fulton Parkway for a length of five hundred feet on each side, so a total of a thousand feet, five hundred feet on each side of Cochrane Mill Road. Further buffer reduction down to about sixty feet between where the buffer would end on the, that east side, where the, where the buffer elimination would end on the east side to the underpass that exists under the parkway. And then also a buffer reduction from three hundred feet to sixty feet on the north side of South Fulton Parkway. On the east side of Cochrane Mill Road, that proposed buffer reduction is not a reduction of the Cochrane Mill Road buffer, but the, the, the parkway buffer. Again, heading toward that, that, that underpass that I, that I mentioned. The revised plan, which shows these buffer reductions also, just to go through some of the changes from what we've been talking about for months and months, includes the addition of a small buffer on the eastern boundary of the project where it abuts the Bear Creek Hamlet. The addition of a trail connecting the southwest quadrant and the northwest quadrant that would run under the existing bridge along the creek. And a change for the proposed phase one that has a larger footprint. Again, that's part of, part of the reason for that proposed buffer reduction on the, on the north side of the, of the parkway. Staff has recommended a set of conditions. Again, they've been in many of the packets, the packet you have in front of you includes many additional conditions that are related to, or some, I should say, additional conditions that are related to the proposed elimination of the, of the buffer. We had a hearing on the proposal in the planning commission meeting this last month. The planning commission voted seven to zero unanimously to recommend not approving the variance and voted four to three to recommend approving the rezoning with some condition changes. One of their conditions was that the applicant, of course, present a plan that would be approved without the buffer reduction, because the plan in the packet is the one with the, the buffer reduction. It eliminates three of the proposed conditions, those three, three that wouldn't be necessary if the variance were not approved. And then finally, an additional condition, just making sure that the development agreement is is signed before any, any permits are issued. Staff's recommendation for this meeting is the deferral.
Okay, go ahead and open up the public hearing and we can just take both instances together or?
Well, let's let the applicant speak first.
Okay.
And then I'll start calling the public.
Sounds good.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember as well as staff. Appreciate being here. Again, to discuss this project, I will keep it short. I'm going to go a little bit off script from what I discussed with my client, because I, you know, I've been hearing there's a lot of information going along online. I'm not a social media user, but I hear, I can, I understand how a lot of information can just get overlapped and confused. So I would just like to make a public statement that I would recommend everyone go online and download the staff report to read the facts of what is being proposed by Merrill Trust at their five hundred acre site. And to that point, I also would like to, to note that Merrill Trust is, is a family company and we have family representatives here today for that. Many of y'all have met them before. But we do have Merrill's here as well as their legal counsel. I would let it be note that my, my part as a consultant with the Merrill's, I am their planner. And again, for that aspect, I should have stated my address, so fourteen forty-seven Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia. I am their planning consultant with the firm T S W, who is nationally recognized for developing exactly these kind of communities that is being proposed by the Merrill's. In fact, we have done a lot of consulting in Chat Hills recently, as well as in the past, and a lot around the Atlanta region that many communities to many people may not realize was a concept plan developed by the firm T S W that I represent. I just wanted to state that because we truly believe in creating a place and creating that place for the community and for the people. And you know, when the Merrill's came to us back in two thousand twenty-one, the winter of, we started this process. They presented this opportunity they had for this five hundred and twenty-eight odd acre site right off of the South Fulton Parkway, Fulton Parkway corridor. It was hugely exciting to be able to be with the team from the very start to start imagining what the possibilities were for this site. Of course, the first thing we did was reference the zoning first by going to the comprehensive plan. And without, you know, repeating myself too much from last month, you know, we, we started with that. We are in the preferred village area. Okay, that's good. What is our base zoning? We are rural, but because we're in the preferred village area on the key corridor, that's always been identified by the comprehensive plan since the founding of the city. We knew that a village designation was appropriate for this location. There are many caveats, not caveats, excuse me, elements as to why that is the case due to traffic and so forth, but that's what the intention of this corridor was for. We've gone into detail many times in previous meetings as well as public meetings that have been hosted by the Merrill family that, to review those items in detail. So in the, in the interest of time, I will not dive back into that. But I will state that those are on public record and we would be happy to bring those up again, or reach out to us and we'll meet independently. Now, I'm going to go back to my script real fast. So just mentioned the, the meetings that have been hosted. Mentioned the, the village designation and our aspect to be there. And we started this process, as I said, in two thousand twenty-one, when the Merrill's came to us. We first came to the city in February of two thousand twenty-two. That's when we met with planning staff to review our proposal to great excitement that something like this could come to, you know, very high level ideas at that time of what could happen on this. We then spent the next year developing the concept in an open process. I mentioned those meetings that were attended by about thirty to forty people hosted by the Merrill's as the concept was being developed to get feedback. We also invited willing council members as well as planning commission members to meet with us at, in an appropriate manner here at City Hall to review what we were up to on this, this quadrants here. And the idea and the vision that was behind it to create a there, there, a town center for, a village center for the city of Chattahoochee Hills, which, mind you, would also include undocumented in the conditions, public amenities, such as a, a school opportunity for a fire station. And who knows what else could potentially come as this community grows. So those aspects were all, have all been talked about over the, over the last few years. And as well as documented in the conditions that I stated of the staff report earlier. So invite people to please take a look at that to see exactly what is being voted on. I'll also say, you know, a big part of the conversation in April, which April was the last time we had one of those appropriate meetings with willing council members and planning commissions members. That was April of two thousand twenty-four. We discussed, at that time, the plan on the books was have full buffers in place. It was our understanding that there would be no relief. We've had many conversations back and forth. And this goes to why people might believe that we are switching plans out. We are not. The conversation really is going. Can we achieve this plan with buffers or can we, or do we have to implement them? And the aspect I'll say, and the reason I stated about my firm and who I represent and why I am the consultant on this project is because we did not want to create separated nodes or hamlets within this keynote of the city. We believe in this. We truly do. We believe that for a village to thrive at a primary intersection in the city of Chattahoochee Hills that's been identified since cityhood for a village that a reduction and removal of buffers would be needed at the town center core, at the village core. Now, I say that, we are also requesting a reduction of the buffer in the northeast quad. I would say, you know what, if we can get the buffers removed on Cochrane Mill to create a healthy, thriving retail establishment there in a village format where buildings front the street, just like you would drive down a country road and come across a quaint little downtown with Main Street buildings running both sides. That is the type of development that is being promoted, proposed here along Cochrane Mill Road. That is the main intent to remove those and is documented of why that is needed from both professionals and my professional organization of the Congress for the New Urbanism, but also with those with the American Planning Association and practitioners in the field at many of the universities across this country would agree with that. One of which I would invite people to read, read up on is Robert Gibbs. The reason for the corridor opening on Cochrane Mill Road, that linear footage is strategic. It's twelve hundred, between twelve and fifteen hundred feet. That is not a number pulled out of the air. That is the comfortable number to walk from one retail establishment to the other to, to go through the whole downtown. You know what? Developers adopted that that length, that twelve hundred to fifteen hundred length. Measure any mall in America. Measure how that mall is shaped, no matter if it's horseshoe, a snake, or whatever, guarantee you it's between that number. When you exceed that number, it's recommended by Gibbs that you implement a civic use, a park, a city hall, something to that effect, to give a pause to that corridor. That's what we're doing with a triangular park there that's halfway. That is at the twelve hundred foot mark from the intersection of the parkway. We've extended slightly beyond that, but you'll notice that once we get to that pause, we then transition to a mixed use component on our land use plan. No longer are we calling it the village center because we know the intensity of that development needs to be pulled back because most people visiting this village will only remain walking the sidewalks between the parkway and where that triangular park is. I would, I can't stress enough how much thought and planning has gone into this that has not been acknowledged because the amount of disinformation that's been out there. This is a well-thought-out plan. I fully back it. My firm fully backs it. If we did not, we would not be representing the Merrill's. With that, I will reserve rest of time if there is any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jim Myers. Good evening, everybody. I'm, I'm here to kind of support development on the parkway. I represent the South Fulton Parkway Alliance and have been involved with it since two thousand and two, and I thought I could provide some good perspective or maybe a different perspective from an, an overview. Keep in mind, I was involved as a stakeholder all the way back to when Serenby was zoned. We've tried to work with the A R C. We hosted meetings two thousand sixteen timeframe, I might be off just a little bit, where we had charrettes and the community was invited, obviously. And the, the, the idea was to kind of find out where we were as the road had migrated to a state road. And it is a developmental highway going through, obviously, around a hundred thousand acres. And so we've been involved with everything from the formation of the Eritropolis CIDs to improve things at the airport. I've, you know, my church is on the parkway. I've lived at Serenby while my house got destroyed one time and got to experience that. So what I'm saying is, we, as a parkway alliance leader, we are promoting quality development. I have personally witnessed development by this developer with Fox Hall because I was on, I still am on the Development Authority in Douglas County. And they, the Merrill's have been an outstanding kind of group for our county, provided a lot of resources and, you know, given us use, you know, as the county for community events and things like that. So that part, they've been good, good partners with us. I can't say that we've always been good partners to other developers, including Merrill Trust. Recently, you know, they've been our, one of our new planning and zoning folks has, has wanted to have parking decks. That's nothing that I could see anybody would want in this area. So I just caution you to use balance and, and you know, I trust this council to enforce what you have here. We have battled on the parkway to prevent more and more warehousing because of some controversial zoning that was called town center mixed use with a little opening for them to put warehouses and we haven't opening for them to put warehouses and we haven't gotten the Town Center Mixed Use that we want. The pivotal thing that you need to remember is if you're, you gotta have a balance in what you do with your developers. If you have someone willing to work with you, that is worth so much. And they have been willing to work with us in Douglas County, but I can't sit there and tell you what to do with your buffers and things like that. All I can tell you, it's a crucial time right now. If we can get quality development in this particular area, it'll push back the bad development that we don't want coming down the Parkway. And I warn you this because if we don't, you can't stop the trucks from using the roads unless something else is changed. So I, I'm concerned with even South Douglas getting flooded with heavy trucks and things like that. If we don't do something and you know, you don't want to, I'm not try- trying to pressure you time wise, but I'm just telling you, it is a crucial time for us. And uh appreciate the time tonight. Thank you. South Fulton Parkway meets second Thursday every month. Sure. My address is twenty five Highview Road in uh Blairsville, Georgia. And then the Parkway is located at Mount Vernon Baptist at fifty eight seventy five Highway ninety two.
Hudson, you brought a card up when I was reading the, um, the rules. Are you in support of or in opposition to this? Say it louder. Okay, thank you. Next, I have a, um, a statement that I'd like to read. It was, um, it's in support of. This is from Doug Cloud, who is Chair of the Bear Creek Project One. Um, twenty seventy seven Convention Center Parkway.
It was two Doug.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, it's John McGregor. I can't even read. John McGregor, Bear Creek Project One. Twenty seventy seven Convention Center Parkway Suite two forty.
We, our practice has been that we're not reading those in. We're just entering to the record.
Okay, that's fine. Then we'll just enter that he's in support of. All right. Now I have no more in support of. I have those in opposition uh to the uh, to the proposed rezoning. I have an email from Perry Crawford. Excuse me, from um, Deneen Crawford that I'm going to put into the record. Next, Laurie Searle.
I'm Laurie Searle. I live at one, two, six, zero, zero Whiteside Road. I'm opposed to this project. Uh, when we changed our comp plan the last time to show this large swath of land along South Fulton Parkway with the ideal location for villages. The idea was that the city does not maintain the South Fulton Parkway. So it made sense that we would funnel most of the traffic there on roads we don't maintain. Little did I know, until I was informed, that that could also include extending down to arteries on other roads. I understand that this project has been in review and design for a year, but since nineteen ninety seven, citizens in this community have been working on a rural vision and that included twenty nine miles of road along around the city to include Cochrane Mill Road, Hutchinson Ferry Road and Campbellton Redwine Road called the scenic byway where they said they did not want any development, no uh commercial development. They wanted it to maintain to be rural. This proposed village extends down one mile of Cochrane Mill Road and includes fourteen road cuts. I see no way that that is going to maintain a rural character in this area. Additionally, it joins Cochrane Mill Park, our eight hundred acre treasure to this community. It will have an impact on the park and the developer has provided some of that impact offset into side his development. But initially, when I was on council last year, I asked for much more. I said, if you're going to use our park and bring in two thousand homes, you need to build us a visitor center. You need to add more parking and amenities for that park. None of that is added to this plan today. Additionally, it doesn't meet our requirements for a village of being walkable. If you've got to cross the scenic byway to get to your commercial zones, I don't see how that's walkable. Maybe phase one is walkable where the initial hundred and forty one homes are. The other problem I have with it is there is no plan. The plans I've seen have included uh placeholders for a hospital, for a higher education, for this and that. But the developer has said he is not going to be building this. He's going to be um I don't know what the, the terms, selling it off, right, to, to others to build this. So without a clear plan and, and we're only looking at phase one, but you have to approve the whole thing if you're going to approve it. You might as well put blindfolds on and do pin the tail on the donkey. I don't know how you can approve, which you don't know. And this is our first village and another one's coming behind it. Um, maybe hamlets would be better. I don't know. But I think these are things worth considering. The other thing I don't understand is why this is under two applications. If the, if the second application came in later, now you have the chance in the next meeting to roll it up under one. It shouldn't be so kludgy that you've got to vote on one with the, out the other. And if you vote on the first one and not the second, you have no map to see what that first one looks like without his, without passing the um buffers. So anyway, I'd ask the the council to consider this and consider my comments. Thank you.
Next, Danette Posit- Posia. I'm saying that correctly. Danette. Is it Kasia? You're up.
Okay, you just, you wanted to let people know you were opposed. You don't want to speak. Got it. All right.
Next, Sharon Beaver.
I'm just here to help.
The Beaner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, good, good evening, uh mayor and council and to my fellow residents. My name is Sharon Beaner. I live at eighty five fifty Wilkerson Mill Road. Um, right at the corner of Cascade Palmetto and Wilkerson Mill Road. Um, I'm not going to hold you because I could just mimic what uh Laurie just shared and what some others have shared. And I spoke at the previous planning uh commission meeting. I am opposed to the development. Um, however, um, what I wanted to share with the council is that I think that all of us feel very passionately about growth and development in the city. I am so thankful for you all and the work that you all do and the attention um to detail and the knowledge that you have about development. I've learned just so much. Um, I'm so thankful for Mr. Wolf. That was the planning commission meeting uh the, at the last meeting that I attended. Um, so I just would encourage you all to just have an ear to hear everyone's ideas and thoughts with respect and not be so dogmatic about what your specific position is. Because I think there is salt, there's such a broad array of knowledge and information that I, I trust you all to come up with what is best for the whole of the city. Not Mr. Merrill, not just Sharon Beaner, but for the whole of the city. That's what I want to see. I want to see you maintain the rural feel. I personally, I think that what's been proposed is too dense for a little city like this. I would like to see something much smaller to help maintain uh the feel of the rural ruralness here. And I think to even propose to omit buffers or to degrease them to the scale that's been proposed is, I just, I couldn't get past that. I just think that, you know, having learned that uh Mr. Merrill's project in Palmetto, which is right in the center of Ca- uh Chattahoochee Hills, he had the opportunity to be a part of this and opted not to. Well, there's a price you pay for that, right? And so now where he's on the other side of that, I expect for, I expect for you all to hold his feet to the fire. Dot every I, cross every T. There's no reason that he can't adjust his plans to fit within the buffer requirements that we have. Scale down. Don't have this and that and the other thing. We don't need it all. I appreciate what Richie said, or maybe it was Mr. Lightsy, or maybe it was Mr. Pete, because I listen to all of them and they all have such great ideas. But I just think that we don't have to do everything right now. I think that we're in a position throughout this country, maybe even around the world, where things are changing. The economic um landscape for all of us, whether you're in business or whether you're not, it is changing daily. Um, I don't see any evidence of Mr. Merrill's project at, at Fox Hall down there and that's, I wouldn't call that a success. So what we have to look at that's right here, that's in the uh recent past, is not something that I would say, oh, that's great. Let's let him do. It's not like a Serenby. We can look and see what Serenby has done, what they've accomplished. Hey, let them go with it. But we don't have that here. So please take your time and really think about this and think about the people that live here and what we desire. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Maria Hansen.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm Maria Hansen. I live at eight, one, three, five Atlanta Noonan Road. And I'll tell you a little story. I hope it doesn't bore you, but um it doesn't take a minute chatting with me to realize I'm not from around here. Uh, I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin. We had a main street with commercial, no stoplights, good city schools and a picturesque river which flowed through our town. I eventually moved to Atlanta in the eighties to attend college next to Dante's Down the Hatch in Lenox Square in Buckhead and where Mr. Merrill grew up. It was quite different from my hometown, to say the least, but all this to illustrate how glad I am. I grew up where I did. I mean, I love the big city of Atlanta. I really do. But since moving here with our horses uh around nineteen ninety two, my husband and Dave and I were active in the formation of our land use plan and the, the groups that were involved in that. Um, to plan to keep the big city where it is and preserve the feel of the countryside. Our committees were made aware of Mr. Merrill's property accumulation since it was an integral part um in the charrettes that uh we were planning as a vill- for a village, for our future city. And at the last minute, we were gobsmacked to learn that Harrison had wheeled and deal his way out of our city limits. So he could have more freedom to do as he wished with his development plans. But he still has property within our city and now wants variances and massive development at a crossroads within the Eritropolis that adjoins our city's jewel of a park. If he had plans to create like a Fox Hall type community here, I might be more amenable to this plan. But I don't want a new Buckhead or Alpharetta development here with high rises and density that will undoubtedly ruin the tranquility of Cochrane Mill Park and the historic mill property on the Wilkerson Mill side of the Parkway. Um, it's like he's getting a twofer because his massive subdivision to village in Palmetto that he pulled from our control and his five hundred acre village in our city, um, he gets both, right? Bo- and both will affect us here greatly. And since he is just the broker in this village, there are no guarantees these development entities will do their best to maintain our high standards. And I am asking this city council to stick to our original philosophy of maintaining the invisibility of our inevitable development and please, for the love of God, do not grant him an inch of variance. He's betrayed our trust once and he won't hesitate to betray us again. Thank you.
Next, Renee Prince.
Renee Prince, one, three, zero, one, five Hamilton Road. Good evening, Mayor Council, citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. I'm speaking to you tonight to oppose Merrill Village. As most of you all know, I ran for city council back in twenty nineteen to help represent the contention in District Five, but fell short. However, God had another plan for me. He wanted to remain and wanted me to remain involved in the city, but to help the citizens on a more, more personal level. One of the ways that I enjoy interacting with the citizens is through social media, communication and speaking to the council when needed. This is a time just for that. My family and I moved here sixteen years ago and I thought we found a slice of heaven. The city had just formed that, that year, the year before and the original master plan, comprehensive plan zoning was what new, every new citizens would dream of moving into. At this time, many, many citizens are just becoming aware of the fact that our Unified Development Code, UDC, has undergone multiple changes over the last five to six years. Each of those changes have helped encourage development and not preservation. One example is elimination of mileage restriction between a hamlet and village, villages. The original plan was to separate them by three miles. It is now down to five hundred feet. The moral village will actually be adjacent to a hamlet without any restriction denoted. Another example is elimination of the Parkway commercial. The Parkway should have a designated space for commercial district. However, this commercial space village should not be next to our city's jewel, Cochrane Mill Park. Moral Village is requesting variances for no buffers along our Parkway and or Cochrane Mill Road, which is a scenic byway. Finally, the biggest change was made, was reducing the acreage to be considered a village from one thousand to five hundred acres. Although five hun- five hundred acres is a large tract of land, you cannot accommodate a mixed use village on such a small tract without requesting variances. I would encourage this council to vote no and reevaluate the UDC to benefit the private citizens of our city over developers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, Marlene Fogel. Marlene. Just be noted. Okay, that's fine. Uh, next, Marlo Fogel. Same. Is that just to be noted to be in opposition?
Nope, she's coming up.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Marlo Fogel. I live on um Henry Mill Road. This is my first council meeting and I'm terrified of public speaking. Um, but I grew up here my whole life and the thought of going down Cochrane Mill and seeing any development, much less a town center with a commercial um property, it's just, that would ruin the whole area. Um, if you're going to have a village center, why can't it be further back on those five hundred acres where you don't see it at all? Um, I don't think there should be any um changes to a buffer. We need more buffers. There's no reason we should see any of it. There's not that many thorough roads through our uh city. We should, those should be maintained to be a rural atmosphere completely. Thank you.
Next, Mitchell Wolf.
Being just a layperson, I'll try to be as brief as possible.
Mitchell, if you'll state your um address.
Uh, three hundred Model Lane, Chattahoochee Hills. Georgia. Two sixty, that works. Um, before I begin and before I hope the time begins, as many of you know, we're, we're here only about fourteen months, my wife and I. And I have made it a mission of speaking with as many neighbors, neighbors of ours within Chad Hills on a variety of matters. And what comes through loud and clear is that there is a Serenby and a non-Serenby. Again, based on our limited time here, I feel like I have a fresh outlook upon our city. I get it. I really do. However, we now have to put our pencils down as the saying goes and come together as one. I am not being histrionic, but there are upcoming decisions that will need to be made that can have his historic negative consequences upon our city. We're not Serenby or non-Serenby. We're Chattahoochee Hills. We're here because we love this place and we don't want it ruined. We need to speak more with each other. I have, and it's amazing, the diversity there is amongst all of the citizenry here, not just one or the other. Please think long and hard about it. Before we moved here, we lived in Austin, Texas for a little more than five years. And the first three were marvelous, but then things drastically changed. The traffic and crime became unbearable, pollution, water and electric not working. It literally, literally went from the number one city to move to in the United States to all being almost wiped out for consideration. And so we decided to move. My wife said, check this out. And so I read. Chattahoochee Hills is a city in Fulton County, Georgia, located about twenty five miles southwest of Atlanta. With a population of around three thousand people, the city is known for its picturesque countryside, rolling hills and sprawling farms. Chattahoochee Hills is also home to several Chattahoochee Hills is also home to several outdoor recreational areas, including the Chattahoochee Hills Eventing Center. And the Bear Creek Nature Center, which offer opportunities for hiking, horseback riding and other outdoor activities. In addition, the city is committed to sustainable development and environmental conservation. With a focus on preserving the natural beauty of the area while promoting responsible growth and development. Overall, Chattahoochee Hills is a new, unique and beautiful city that offers a peaceful respite from the hustle and bustle of nearby Atlanta. In addition, it is home to the Silk Sheets. The Silk Sheets Road Bike Ride, known for its smooth hills and well-maintained roads, offers a serene cycling. Experience with minimal traffic is one of Metro Atlanta's most popular road rides. I'm an avid triathlete and road biker. I was sold. I read further, located in Chattahoochee Hills, Georgia, Cochrane Mill Park with eight hundred acres of woods, fields and streams, features stunning waterfalls. Huge boulders, rock outcrops, wildflowers, native azaleas, mountain laurel and the ruins of three historic mills. And so a year ago, June, we moved here and it was as advertised. What's striking for me on a personal basis is the similarity to the area we lived in for over twenty years in New Jersey. We were out in the country, Far Hills, Tewksbury, Peapack, Ladstone, et cetera. About sixty-five thousand acres, families have lived there for decades and they have religiously preserved the natural beauty. If you wanted great food, Manhattan was an hour away, where other towns say twenty to twenty-five minutes. Shopping, you could go to twenty minutes to the Short Hills Mall, which had fancy shops like Neiman's, Fendi, et cetera. Great supermarkets within twenty minutes. So you would do your thing and then come back into civilization, just like here.
That's time, that's time. Yep, that, that's it.
Sorry.
It's three and a half, but that's three and a half minutes.
Okay.
Next, Calvin Ray.
Oh.
Three and a half, maybe a little longer this time.
My name's Calvin Wright. I live on one oh three oh five hundred Mill Road. You know, when you drive down Fulton County Parkway between um. Palmetto Cascade and Cedar Grove Road, at some point you see a big old line of trees, beautiful trees. Till you get to an entrance way, there's a big subdivision behind all those trees. I don't know that thing was there till I come to that subdivision. That's what I want to see out here. I mean, we're rural. If we're, if we're gonna be all this building, I want to at least make it still look rural. With these buffers in place to hide all that stuff. And Cochrane Mill Road is a main thoroughfare, as far as I'm concerned, between Fulton County Parkway and Hutchinson Ferry Road. I. Every other day I'm, I'm on that road. So please, consider what we want, wish for. Thank you.
Next, I believe it's Elroy Windsor, is that right? Mr. Windsor?
Good evening. Uh, I'm at sixty-five eighty-five Jenkins Road. Elroy Windsor. I have lived in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I spent time living in Brooklyn, New York. I lived in Atlanta, Georgia. And when I moved back to the area, I moved to Smyrna. And I was looking for a place to ride my mountain bike, getting bored of Soap, Soap Creek up there. And I saw Cochrane Mill had some really great trails. Drove down here, got my bike on the back of the truck. I thought, what is this amazing place? What is this beautiful? Area so close to Atlanta, so close to a city with access to a lot of different events. Spaces, places that I really enjoyed having nearby. What is this amazing rural area? Surrounded by farmland, surrounded by trees, nature. I loved it. I took a chance. I rented a home with the Hansons. Back in twenty nineteen, cuz I wanted to see if this rural community would be accepting of me and my family. And it was. I was very happy to see in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. That this was an area I wanted to invest in. So my partner and I bought our home here in twenty twenty. Our home is on the northeast quadrant area adjacent to this proposed development, which I oppose. And I oppose it because I don't believe that they have met the zoning criteria. I don't believe they adequately addressed the questions required from our planning and zoning commission. Which I think that you can see in their divided four-three vote. I don't think the environmental concerns were adequately addressed. I don't think they adequately addressed the sound and light pollution issues. I don't think that their non-plan plan has a true vision. For what is needed here. And speaking of plans. Just because something was imagined in the original plan. That doesn't mean it has to happen. There's no requirement by law. That that RL turn to VL and that that area get rezoned. That is not a legal requirement. That is a vision. And as we all know, thankfully, sometimes plans change. Sometimes they have to change. And you all as elected leaders of the city are obligated to reflect the interests of the citizens you represent. It is very clear that this community greatly opposes this specific proposal. I'm not anti-development. I am for smart, strategic, environmentally sound development that respects the rural character. Of the city and I implore you all to reflect these interests that you're hearing today. Thank you.
Next, Matt. Next, Matt Schultz.
I'm not sure if I heard you over there.
Matt Schultz.
How y'all doing? Matt Schultz, seventy-five forty-five Rico Road. I oppose the project mostly because of the size of it. Doesn't mean our current zoning and its proximity to Cochrane Mill Park. I think overall it had a negative impact on our community. And that's all I got. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard work.
Next, Scott Schaefer.
All right, thanks. I'm Scott Schaefer from ninety-nine oh five Rivertown Road. I got a plethora of little thoughts here, not as eloquent as Mr. Wolf, but uh, we'll uh. I wanted to hear what he had to say. I wish you would have given thirty seconds more. Okay, um, I'm here to say, I really want no, no to the business variance or whatever there, you're gonna call this. Um, just up the road, you got a Shell Papa, Papa John's. Uh, I think there's still a liquor store there. That's kind of a business frontage place. And they ended up having to put a police precinct in there to keep people from shooting each other. So I don't know what you think's gonna stop that from occurring at this place. But it's just something to think about. It's a half a mile up the road. If you think. You're gonna be able to stop that kind of thing, think, I would say, think again. It's too many people for what our rural place is. I'm kinda tired of hearing. Mike, I'm gonna throw you under the bus. Uh, I think you said it, two thousand homes. If someone doesn't start using the word apartments, I'm gonna freak out. You, you just gotta say what it is. They're not homes. They're apartments. Okay? It's misleading and I'm tired of that. The other thing I'm tired about is, is just hearing indirectly from council and mayor. That the city is, needs this development, that we're going broke. I've looked at the, the data. We're not going broke. We don't need this development. We're doing them a huge favor by allowing things under our. Zoning, okay? And you guys have been a little loose with allowing variances to go down. You know, distance between hamlets to just shrink away to nothing. It's, it's ridiculous. That's my timer. It's not yours. So in general, I, we're, we're, I lost faith in that you guys are capable of, of watching things. I watched just my church next door um, to me, they, they built over the property line. You gave them a CO. Even though I came up and twice and said to the city, that happened. How does that happen? How are you gonna watch a big development if you can't watch one guy building a house? And it comes over onto the church property, which we'll, we'll bring that up later, probably in a legal standing. Um, you can't put white lines down. I heard you, Darrell. Put, put some dots. Okay, some old lady's gonna get killed cuz you can't put some dots in the road. I mean, I'll do it. I've seen the Three Stooges do it. It's not the straightest line, but. Okay, um, movie studio, I, I'm glad it's not going. I think it didn't happen because people here, good people came up and said. Why don't you check out the financial wherewithal of that movie studio? We didn't do it. It, it never got checked out. It failed because of, of that. No one checked it out. I don't think we need this, this type of huge development. So I think you wasted a lot of people's time in, in the movie studio discussion. And we're about to waste a lot of people's time in this discussion. Um, nothing against Mr. Merrill. I, he's a developer. This is what he does. But we were here first. This is what we do. We keep it rural.
Next. Herman Hudson.
Hello, my name is Herman Hudson. I'm at seventy-six twenty Hopkins Road in Chattahoochee Hills. Um, it's pretty difficult for me to speak for only three and a half minutes. So what I like to do is to copy and paste everything everybody else said. Put that down under my comments too. And then I'll follow up with just maybe two rhetorical questions and then I'm done. So Merrill, as I understand it, is asking Chat Hills to change its rules. Chat Hills to change its rules to suit Merrill's needs. And my question is, what is the benefit to the Chat Hills community that would improve its current state? Chat Hills is ruled by design. It has wildlife, farms and fresh air. Can Merrill improve on that? Thank you.
Next, Ryan Scoville.
Hey, I'm Ryan Scoville. I live at one two three two five Garrett's Ferry Road. So I, I want to expand on some of the points that I made during the planning commission meeting. Uh, the Merrill Project is gonna more than double our city's population. And like, I've heard a lot of great points tonight, a lot of which. Um, I was gonna make, but don't wanna repeat. Um, but you know, like it was said, these are apartment complexes. They're not homes. And having twenty-five hundred extra or two thousand or wherever the number is, extra home or apartments here. It's gonna bring people into our community that are used to an um, urban style living situation. They're not. Living the way that we are, you know, um, out in the country and they might not have the same views as we do. As far as wanting to keep the community rural. And that's a lot more voters in our community that could. Totally turn around everything that everybody's worked so hard over the years to, to keep. So um, just kinda wanted to make that point. Uh, that it seems to me like a domino effect. You know, it's just gonna continue. You're gonna need more resources, having that many people. You may get more tax revenue, um, but you're gonna have a lot more issues. You know, you're gonna need more fire. You're gonna need more uh, road maintenance. Uh, everything just continues to expand. And I think that's just kind of uh. Just the domino effect of it. So uh, I lived in South Georgia before I moved to Chat Hills. I moved here in twenty sixteen. And I grew up on a dirt road on a lake. And when I was ready to buy a house, I was looking for a spot that was uh, in the country. Like similar where, where I grew up. So then I could raise my kids on a dirt road and work in an area. Uh, you know, my, my job's thirty minutes away. So I'm able to go into favor. I work at Trill Studios, actually. I work um, for a company that supports. Deliding a group equipment at the movie studio there. And um, and I live out here because I wanna get away from everything. And I just think uh, we should try to keep it that way. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have two people who do not wish to speak, but one of their names read uh, as opposing the um, application. Rodney Kelso and Gail. Abrey Hamian. Okay, I was close. All right, and then Mr. Mayor, um, we. Had um, these two public hearings. One of them was really a first read. And I discussed with you and I discussed with uh, Mr. Um, Merrill. Whether we could do both the buffers and the rezoning. Lori Searle spoke first in opposition to the rezoning. She also wanted to speak on the buffers. I took that out because I thought she'd already um, had spoken on that. So it really was my action that, that kinda caused that problem. She'd like to speak if that's okay.
I'm Lori Searle. I'm still at one two six zero zero Whiteside Road. So um, this council, uh, including the new members who are on the planning commission. Talked about buffer windows when we made changes, maybe it was last year to the UDC. And we had nice pictures of it and you can't see it from here. Can't see it from here. But the whole idea with a buffer window is to. It's a little, oops, it's a little break in the buffer. So you get that there's something appropriate behind there, mostly. A village kind of thing. In this picture, it's a nice church. And it looks like a country village. Maybe it looks like Serenby. I don't know that it was intended to look like to reveal the commercial. Developments on both sides and to have this Cochrane Mill Road in between turned into a boulevard. Even if it was, when we reviewed that last year, the buffer window only applied to non-scenic roads. And Cochrane Mill Park is a scenic road. So here I go, I'm just beating the drum again, scenic road, scenic road, scenic road. It's really all we have that is around our perimeter of the city. And I get the whole idea, the purpose of the villages. The attraction of that to us is that the um, preservation is done outside of the village, where the hamlet, the preservation is done inside. And that's a cool thing. We want to preserve the rural landscape. But when it brings thousands more people in, there's kinda a disconnect with that picture. So you got the pretty farmland and then two thousand, three thousand more people running down Cochrane Mill Road. Anyway, just to say that as far as the buffer's part of this project, I get where he wants. Uh, where the applicant would want that for his commercial side of the, of the business. But that's not what we had in mind when we created this buffer window or the scenic byway. Thank you.
The applicant did ask to reserve time for rebuttal.
And I'll just be really quick. I just wanted to um, state two things, you know. I agree and the Merrills agree. This is an intimidating development, the scale of it. Um, and the amount of time it's been in conversation to sit and in some ways fester. These public comments to, to come after it. I mean, it's, if we had a room like this the first time we were. In a first, and with, had the first read, you know? I think it would have been a lot different, um, the opinions that are floating around there. But not to say that those opinions are not valid. Those are passionate opinions of the residents of Chattahoochee Hills. I will say the reason why. This whole thing is not built out on paper with little footprints of buildings, little roadways with cars in them. Beautiful little rendering. We're not trying to sell a fake image. This is the framework plan that's being submitted. The city of Chattahoochee Hills code was specifically and smartly written that way. To allow the market to determine the build out of developments of this scale, Serenby. We are not them, but they're using the same process. Just, just wanna note that. The um. The plans will be approved. Merrill cannot, and if Merrill sells his land ten years from now and it's entitled with the village. The new owner still has to come to this podium. To request approval of new phases. That's intentional. That's why that is not built out. Each time. A portion of a block, a block one. Each time a portion of a block, a block wants to be built, they have to come for design approval in front of this council. They have to meet the code of Chattahoochee Hills as it is written today, because this is the time it's being, uh, submitted. And please correct me if I'm wrong, legal, yeah. Um, so I'll just state that the control of the quality of development and design as the phases build out beyond phase one is in the hands of the residents in the council of Chattahoochee Hills. It is not, um, it is not that scary to think of because you still have control as this development continues. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, thanks, everybody, for your input. We have the, the way that because of the issue with the uh, posting of the variance request earlier, that was just a first read. Um, we talked about this in the work section. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to defer action on twenty-three dash oh four four, which is the actual zoning till next month, when we're going to have action on the variance, because again, those two things go together. Um, can I get a motion and a second for that, please?
I'd like to make a motion. Have this thing thrown out. That's the motion I would like to make.
There a second to that?
Second.
Not hearing a second.
Second, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So we have a motion on the table to, uh, deny twenty-four dash oh four six, pardon me, sorry, oh four four, which is the rezoning of this parcel. Uh, any discussion about that before you do?
And, and I'll say this, you know, a lot of people said a lot of things. Um, but it's, it's, it's pretty simple to me. You know, I've told a lot of, a lot of you citizens before. You know, it's in the hole. Okay, this is your thing, this is my thing. I went in the first. I won't ever allow four or five grown men with money to dictate how I live. And that's why I sit in this chair, because I don't trust anybody else to take my way of living. Uh, if you look at what Noonan just did, they tried to go up twenty-three percent on their taxes. They surrounded City Hall. Their taxes did not go up. Okay, so, so realize the power that you have. This is your property. Okay, um, my problem is not with, with any developer. I don't care what your name is, but there's no due diligence here. There, we don't know where the money's coming from. I need to know who I'm doing business with. And the fact that this document, it has changed a lot. Um, last month, then on meeting, it was made very clear by council. Um, and obviously the planning commission, nobody wants to give up these buffers. I don't think they heard any of that. That's twenty-six acres, I think, if you do the math on all the corners. That's what they're wanting. And, and, and I have no verification of funds. So why, why would I do that? No bank in America would do that. I mean, and it is what it is. And, and don't get me wrong, I'm not anti-develop. But if you're gonna develop, you're gonna have to do some, um, you're gonna have to show us some money. Don't bring me a hundred million dollar project or nothing. And don't bring me a project every other month. You're taking out ten sheets of paper, adding ten more. And, um, and the math, the numbers are, are right. And, and you know, during our workshop, we, we had a pretty good discussion. And I'll remind everybody here of something, okay? There's, there's a lot more. A lot of developments have passed. You're a movie student. That's why I didn't hear, right? You've had some other stuff pass. So you know what? The, the saving grace was that these people didn't have any money. You got a second chance to get your hands back in control of your city. And this is how you do it. You stand up. I'm proud of everybody here because this, this way of life is what you're fighting for. And if you need to go chase money, okay, and I made this point earlier. Some people agree to this, you know, I, I always work for myself. Everybody knows that. You know, a calculator will tell you what you can and can't do, and it'll tell you what you need to do. Right now, our calculator says we're fine. I'm in no hurry to destroy any bit of land. Especially if, 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 if you're not going to meet my UDC code. Not at all. Not gonna do that. Uh, uh, the traffic studies have, have come back. They're in or whatever. You know, it could be years before these roundabouts are in and all this other stuff. You know, another thing, I, I don't want to turn this place into a traffic nightmare for ten or fifteen years while people build. That's ridiculous. Oh, they'll be a roundabout here in two years. That don't help me now. You know, and, and you know, I'm a real black. I don't hang out in the gray area. That's the land of the earth. Our rules are very simple. We spent eighty grand to make that document pretty simple. I, I hate that this is where we're at a year later. A year later. Um, we wasted a, a lot of time. Says it's that and no interference with my way of life. It's not. Everybody else's. You know, when they talk about the stood up and read the facts to me. I know what the facts are. The citizens know what the facts are. And the reason why this has been stretched out a lot, you know, we still have a hard time getting information out there to people. We try to do what we can. But as people find out, it is what it is. Um, and, and some of the points people made, you know, like, like Maureen Hansen. You know, oh, she's sitting there talking about that river running down. I'm sitting there thinking, maybe there's a, a big deer fixing to run across it. She, you got me in a little daze right there. But that is where we live. That's where we live. You don't think if you put a couple of these massive developments around here, what, what you gonna have next? You, you, oh, well, there's too many people here. You can't, you can't go hunting. But what else is down, down the pike? You know, it's, um, me, fourteen years here, the last five years, it's always been, what's next? What's next? What's next? And everything needs, it, it always needs help. I'm not here to help you. I'm here to prove or deny and preserve my way of life and protect what you want. That's my job. My job is not to sit down and consult with developers. If they can read, they can put stuff together. If they can't, they hire consultants. That's what they do. Um, I'm very, I feel very disrespected. Um, the, the council and the planning commission made it very clear last month. They had no interest in even giving up these buffers. And all you did was come back with the same thing. And I don't feel comfortable doing business with that. That's all I got.
Rock and speak loud.
No, 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 you're on.
Okay, am I? Um, what I want to say, I want to say thanks to the citizens for speaking up. Uh, one thing is important to me is to have citizen buy-in. And I don't see that. So I just wanted to make sure that we have the citizen buy-in.
Neil? Ronnie, any thoughts?
Something, you know, going, there is not a person sitting up here that does not want to vote on this tonight. No one up here wants to postpone this. But having said that, mistakes get made. People make mistakes. I'm an air traffic controller. Mistakes get made. There are dire consequences. Someone on our city staff made a mistake. Something did not get advertised as appropriate. And before I want to put the city at risk, I would love a clarification from Rick. It's voting on this tonight with our city at risk since there was a mistake in advertising on oh four six.
Um, you've got a rezoning matter. You've always got to think of, uh, property rights that belong to the, uh, the applicant. And also you balance that against the, um, the zoning, the wishes of the citizens, um, trying to follow the comprehensive plan. The, the issue here is that the buffers, I think, are a part of the rezoning plan. So out of being a big caution, I would prefer from a legal perspective, that the council vote on these at the same time. And I, all due respect, Richie, I'm not trying to go against you, but I'm just trying to think legally, um, to protect the city, I would prefer that these are voted on at the same time. I wish it could be tonight.
Hearing that. No one loves the city more than I do. I do not want to put the city at risk by taking a vote that's inappropriate and then have it come back later and somehow have a negative consequence.
The agenda last month when it was first read, the buffer part of the buffer variance was inadvertently left out. And I had to rule as the city attorney because I got to follow the state law of what is required as far as zoning. And I had to require that the buffer part of it be pulled out and could not be considered by the city council last month in first reading. So that's, that's what happened. And because there was an inadvertent mistake made, that it resulted in these being split. So again, I'm trying to protect you. I'm trying to protect the city from any claims. I don't end up saying that, that, uh, Mr. Merrill would, would file suit, but it could open the door. And so as the attorney, I've got to take the conservative approach and not be aggressive. It is better to do these at the same time. And then be my recommendation that if you defer, that, um, another public hearing be, um, advertised and that it be held so that people who weren't here tonight can come and speak if they wanted to speak next, next month. Sure.
Correct. We can get rid of one of them if you want, right?
You can. I, I'm not going to tell you you cannot do that. I'm just telling you as the attorney.
I understood what you said, but I'm saying, just like you're saying, that there are two separate items. So maybe this one got caught up.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to disagree with that at all, Richie. I'm just saying, again, I have to take the conservative approach when I give advice.
Okay.
It can be heard. Uh, I'd like to question that, that I, that in the applicant's own words, we heard that we quote unquote, did not want to create separate hamlets within the property. And yet they need a variance to bring those things even to together. Check. Um, so our comp plan, the, the standards that the applicant's representative even laid out here, talking about the walkability of retail and so on. There is no walkability. It's, it's obvious to anyone who looks at this plan, in their own words, it doesn't work without the variances. Uh, but the zoning board did excellent work last, last time. Uh, debating and deciding on this. They made their wishes known yesterday, for those who paid attention to the, uh, combined meeting. We had a test case for how we feel about buffers. We had a test case for what I, for how we feel about the first, because we, now, now I'm making a big trouble. Because we, we, we had our zoning consultants come in and there was uniform buffers. So we've got a test case. The road we've been on, the road we're still on, and it's going forward to maintaining those protections. We have the will of the city before us. I was corrected, uh, earlier and misspoke and said, everyone, uh, uh, is against this. And I was wrong, but I can honestly say that no citizen of Chattahoochee Hills has yet, to my knowledge, expressed support for this. So I think the, our, our job as representatives, uh, hopefully reflecting the will of the people who seem to want to vote. We have a motion, have a second. And, yeah. Their own words, they don't have a village because it doesn't meet the standards of our zoning. It's a, and, and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'll do. My, my, the, the last point that I wanted to add is the problem of these four corners is the problem of these four corners is that that's not our problem. They bought a problem and they want us to resolve that problem through variances or through trying to make adjustments, uh, you know, maybe mental emotional adjustments. I don't know, to, to accept that somehow this is a walkable dense village. It just isn't. And, and so things like, for example, and, and not to like devolve down into the little details, but even simple things like the estimate number of trips generated, the number of times per household you get people moving about in cars is wildly underestimated on the assumption of that walkability. And, and so we can't even really trust the traffic study for that. And so, uh, and that's just sort of native common sense. And so I, um, though I've heard some percentages like underestimated by more than half. Uh, so, so let's, let's let's vote on this thing.
Is the risk? And we move forward, this one thing that what we, we up here have to consider. Definitely pros and cons in this case, and Rodney's opinion after hearing everything, the cons the cons are not. I'll try not to touch it. You know, I think the cons outweigh the pros. I don't believe the cons are manageable. I don't believe the city should take all the risks. The city's being asked to take an awful lot of risk. And I'll end.
And if I, and if I could just add, but, okay, I just want to add that Mr. Merrill owns much other property and he can come back. And so Mr. Merrill will, he will be given plenty of that's my application, hopefully in the future.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask it, so.
But, but, but I mean, again, people, the people in the audience can't, up there, the thirty or forty people watching online can't hear us if it's not on one of these. And even the one is not working now.
So the question that we're trying to, before us was to understand if you'd mentioned that it's not potentially in a conservative way, would not be the benefit to the city to not defer these actions. So I'm not sure why, I mean, I'm inclined to go with what the legal course of action, the smartest thing to do based on council. That's just in, in my opinion.
Any other thoughts on that?
That has nothing, you know, I was just gonna say, has nothing to do with the merits of the conversation of what we've talked about today, of all the great conversations that we've had. And I can, I can, I understand that. And there's also a point to make about people that are, you know, it's a hard environment to come out in for a lot of people to make comments. So I really appreciate anybody that stands up. But I do know too, even, you know, uh, Councilmember Lightsey mentioned no one's standing up in favor. I think that would be, that's also really hard, right? So I think as council members, we also take that into account because often those are more of the silent players, right, that have their comments as well. So I think we need to all take that into consideration. You know, positive could simply be that a village is, they believe in our zoning. It may not be particularly this project, right? So, but in, all of that set aside, I'm, I'm still inclined to think that the conservative nature of what the attorney's recommending should be our course of action.
Reiterate a point. Now, I'll tell you.
Appreciate your enormous patience. Yes. Is there some way to recognize a member of the audience who's seeking to speak? There is not. Can we? Can we? Okay. Okay, as a can the applicant, in the interest of a, of a straight up honest vote on As a, can the applicant, in the interest of a, of a straight up honest vote on this, indemnify us? Would the applicant be willing to indemnify us? Be a good citizen and join us in an honest up and down vote on this? I can't, I can't see who's out there because I don't have good eyes. The answer is no.
Month to vote. So your motion dies or it's defeated, right? Not dies, it's defeated. Does that negatively approve the rezoning? And I don't know the answer to that sitting right here. I mean, you can inadvertently approve it. That's a possibility. You know, I, I can't, I can't tell you that that's what's going to happen, but you have a, you made a motion to deny the rezoning. And if you don't get at least three votes, that motion is defeated. Does it by implication then approve the, approve the rezoning? Something you do not want, that you do not want in your motion. Sure. I mean, I work in the world of the law and you got lawyers who make interesting arguments. And I cannot tell you what the appellate courts have ruled on that. It, it may or may not be in a rezoning matter, but it could be in another matter that's been ruled on by the Supreme Court or the Court of Appeals, that when a motion fails and it's in a negative, does that then make it pass in the positive? Could that happen? And I will tell you, it, it might. So if you have three votes to turn down the requested rezoning, then you go forward. If you aren't positive of that, Richie, then it would be safer to say, you know what? I'll, I'll agree to defer my motion. I want my motion heard, but at the next meeting.
In, in, in such an event, such a, such a Byzantine legal right bit of wrangling, given the will of, of the council and this, and the city, couldn't the council then come back on something like that and still overturn?
No.
So, so.
Once you take the vote, you take the vote. You don't get to come back and say, well, we didn't mean that last month. So again, Scott, I can't tell you a hundred percent that that would be the result, but I can tell you for a hundred percent that might be the result. And I don't know the answer sitting here right now. If I could go back to my office and look for about an hour and come back, I could give you a definitive answer. But it's a risk. Is it a risk this council wants to take? That's my question to you guys.
I'm kind of, I'm stunned by the idea of a developer suing to do something that's so thoroughly against. I'm, I'm sure it does. At least we know who we're dealing with.
Not him.
Stop. Wait, wait.
A comment, okay? Okay, let me, let me talk, all right? I want to give you, listen to what's happening. He has property rights equal to everybody else. It comes from the Constitution of the United States and it comes from the Constitution of Georgia, okay? There are procedures to go through when there's a zoning matter. We have to adhere to those. We don't have a choice. If we violate them, they will, okay? So it's not where, whether what I want or anybody else, it's the law. And it's not, if, if somebody thinks that, that, that a body has made a decision, whether it's a council, whether it's a judge, whether it's a magistrate or whatever, in this country, we have the right to appeal to a higher body until there's no higher up. And that would be the Supreme Court of Georgia. He has that right. That doesn't make him evil, just means he's following the, the law. Well, well, I mean like that, you said, we know who we're dealing with. That, that's not the proper approach. Okay. But he has the right to appeal. That's his constitutional right.
And, and there's a, that you're saying that might be accidentally approving this.
Tell you that would happen, but I'm afraid that it could.
If.
Yes.
If we do defer because of this mix up right here. Uh, we want to put them both in either approve them or deny them, whatever takes place. Okay? Does that month timing, I'm going to have to sit here and listen for all this again? Does that mean he's going back to the drawing board to try to come out and present it again in another way? Because like Mike said, there's been 15 meetings. And it's obvious to me that after the last meeting, you heard nothing. And, um, I mean, I just, I don't, I can't work with somebody who doesn't understand what they're reading and understand the will of the people and understand what the council's saying or, or the planning commission, submo. Don't touch the buffers.
Richie, that if he were to come back and, you know, say, okay, I don't need the buffers. Let's take, you know, leave them like they are, you know, I don't want a variance or whatever else. You still have the right to vote no, say, you know what? It's changed so many times, I'm, I just, no, I'm voting no, even with the buffers in place. You have that right. And we don't have to have a public hearing next month. It's my recommendation to the, to the council that you do, just for people who aren't here, who got confused with this inadvertent split of the variance from the zoning. I know it's uncomfortable, not uncomfortable, but it's an inconvenience for citizens to come. I get it. But I'm trying to make sure that we vote smartly. I mean, I don't mean by voting yes or no, I'm just saying vote together.
I follow you, Ricky, you're exactly, I follow you. I just, I, that's what I'm asking. So if we're going to, you know, chalk it up as a clerical mistake, then, then I would assume we step in here next month. They're both neck and neck. And the first question is, give me a motion to approve or deny instead of another hour and a half of, if we see the will of the people. I don't see anybody, raise your hand if you want this. Come on. That's a zero.
All right, Richie, if, if we don't have another public hearing, then you are right. Because we held a public hearing tonight for the buffers along with the rezoning, right? But.
But we can't, it wasn't, it isn't what it is, I get it.
Yeah. But, you know, if, if, let me, let me look at all this, make sure that we follow the ZPA because of this split, so that the city has followed the law and that we've recognized the rights of the applicant and, and the citizens. I mean, I'm not trying to cut anybody out here.
So, no, wait, wait a minute. Let me, just have one second. I have also, like Richie, run businesses my entire life and I hire lawyers to make sure I don't step into something negative. I don't let them make the decisions for me. But I want to make sure that they point out all of the things that might come and cause me trouble. And this feels to me like we're opening a door that we don't want to open. I would, I would keep the store. Suggest that we keep the store closed. And my suggestion, Richie, with that in mind, is that you withdraw your motion. No, that creates this possibility.
Or ask him to defer the motion till next month.
Yeah, defer your motion till next month. Now, so again, that's, that's my request of you because it removes that risk from us. And that's up to you to decide, but I'd like to hear that from you, one way or the other.
So that means next month, the only thing we're talking about is buffers. Then we can turn it off.
No, they're, they're together.
So, so that, that, that was my thing. I, I don't mind doing that, okay? I really don't, I get it. I don't want to put the city in any hot water. I just want to make sure, okay, that means next month, we're just going to talk about the buffers. Because we've already had this conversation. Conversation on the, correct. Then I would say that. So I do not want to see the, the other thing in the docket except for a vote. And then if they want to discuss buffers, we'll do it and I'll pull my motion.
So, well, what, 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 no, what, what I just heard was that Richie doesn't want to have another public hearing on the rezoning. And then he's withdrawing his motion and deferring it to next month so that we don't create this problem that we didn't want to accidentally create. And unless anybody has major brain damage with that, then we'll consider that withdrawn. That's all he has to do is say that he's withdrawing it and deferring it. Because there was not, I, I get it. And then the next thing I'll ask for again is a motion to defer 23-044 and 24-046, which were those two items. And while we're at it, let's go ahead and defer the 24-052, which is the development agreement. Because all of those things are traveling together. Either this project happens or it doesn't. If it doesn't, we don't need a development agreement or a buffer variance. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of those deferrals, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. I appreciate you guys all bearing with this. I mean, look, nobody wants to do something accidentally damaging. And again, you know, people get sick, things get missed, whatever. And so I hate the fact that we're here, but, you know, we're, we're getting to the right answer. So enough of all of that. Moving on, our next item is 24-047, which is consideration of the Park Commission's new updated trail map, which is sitting up there on a pretty poster. And is Roland here? Yes, Roland, you going to come up and tell us about that real quick? Yes, please. Actually, you know what? That's a great idea. Take a five minute bio break for everybody. And if, if you're only here for the other excitement, thanks for visiting. We'll see you next time. To, man, I know y'all are having so much fun. You want to stay here till midnight and all that, but. Well, I'm having fun, I don't want to stay here till midnight.
Didn't they, didn't they count you up?
Um, all right.
Are you calling Roland up first?
We are. Yes, Roland, yes, absolutely Roland. Somebody want to go tell Richie to stub that thing out and get back in here? Hey Chip, do me a favor. Would you go grab Richie and tell him coming back in? It's perfect. You want to get attention, speak quietly. Welcome to the karaoke phase of tonight's meeting. Start with my favorite Barry Manilow. I don't know Barry Manilow stuff. Or, or I'm going to wait for Richie momentarily, but like, I'm glad that you're standing there queued up, ready to go. So that the second, the second.
Quickly.
Yes. Imagine that. Chip, I think you should run for some council seat. I don't know what district you're in, but you'd be perfect up here. Hello, hello? I want to tell you something. All right. Next up is 24-047, which is a recommendation from the planning commission to approve the new trail map for Cochrane Mill Park that an amazing super volunteer. Oh, sorry, Roland, please tell us about this.
Yeah, Roland Paulson, I'm on the Parks Commission. So we kind of, it's an update map for Cochrane Mill Park. Um, that we made to it are, we added, um, the markers are now GPS coordinates and those markers on the map line up with carcinite signposts with the same numbers in the park. So, which will help with emergency access and people getting lost, we hope, if they have the map. The map's also online. There's a QR code on the new map, which will link, you know, a park visitor to a map. So when they're on their phone, and it's web based, so it doesn't matter if it's, uh, you know, Android or Apple phone. Um, that's about it, so.
It's a beautiful map. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt this motion so that we can have that new map posted online and at the park? And, and, well, no, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out here. Everybody sing in this direction. Motion?
24-047, we got a motion. Who got a second?
Two seconds over here. First, motion from Scott, second from Rodney. Or, or vice versa, whatever.
It was done legally, that's all we need to know.
All those in favor, stop thing. Uh, 24-047, please say aye. Ruby, did I hear you? Yes, all right. Then we have a unanimous adoption of 24-047. Roland, thank you so much for your time and work on that and everybody on the Parks Commission, because I know all those are group projects. So thank you very much. Next up is 24-048, which is council consideration of a donation acceptance from the art farm at Serenby. And Thomas Peters is going to talk to us about that. And Thomas Peters is gonna talk to us about that.
I'm coming, my friend.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody. I'm Thomas Peters and I'm representing the Art Farm at Serenby Environmental Council. The Art Farm at Serenby is a 501(c)(3), whose mission is to touch the deepest wells of human spirit through art and nature. And the Environmental Council has worked in the past with the city to achieve B-City certification for Chattahoochee Hills. We see the city as a great partner. And one of the opportunities we saw, one of the greatest assets is the park system for access to nature, education and interpretation. So we would like to assist in a sign and structure for Hutcheson Ferry Park. Right now, there's nothing there. It's pretty simple, it would just be a map showing the trail system, some basic information. And while we were at it, we thought it would be nice to have a similar sign for Cochrane Mill Park, an updated sign. And the concept could be extended to the other parks. Although I know Trust for Public Land is working on signage, so we'd like to reach out to them. But for tonight and for our 2025 budget, we would like to, if it's acceptable, provide these signs. They're printed at about half size right here, they would really be three by four feet. The structure at Hutcheson Ferry Park would be pressure-treated lumber. Sorry, I don't have a more sophisticated image of, it's basically a, a small shelter. And we would put benches in there of backing for the sign to be mounted on. And that's about it, thank you.
All right. I would like to ask for a motion.
Motion to adopt 24-048.
To adopt, yeah, 24-048. And if we could, please, all those in favor of adopting that awesome donation, please say aye. Those opposed, nay, that carries unanimously. And great thanks to Thomas and the Art Farm and all the people that are working on that. Parks are one of our biggest assets and I love the fact that we've got people always stepping up to make them better. So thanks for that. Next up is 24-049, which is consideration to approve a resolution of support for a grant for the US DOT Safe Roads and Streets Program. Chris?
Yes, good evening. The city is applying for a grant for a safety action plan, actually, safety action plan, which addresses the conflicts or intersections or pedestrian interactions between vehicles, cars, cyclists, et cetera. The Safety Planning Action Grant would allow the city to contract with a transportation planner or consulting group. The total grant is the amount of $225,000. Actually, the project is 225. The grant we're requesting is $180,000 from the US DOT with a $45,000 city match, which is 20%.
Fantastic. Can I? Get a motion. To adopt 24, what was the number again? 24-049, we have a motion.
And second.
Thank you. Of course, we have a motion in a second. Does anybody have anything that they would like to ask, ask or discuss?
One question, when it, when it comes to that, I know you said it allows us to hire an engineering firm or whatever. How much of that money is it gonna take for them to do what they're gonna do? So that we know how much we got left?
Well, we have a project cap of 225K. And it's a reimbursement grant, so whatever we expend throughout the course of the program, we get reimbursed by the federal government. So if they're not giving us a lump sum of money, we're actually just paying for it, the billion bucks.
Correct, I understand that. What I'm asking is, okay, after we, we reached the two and a quarter cap, 225, we reached that cap. How much of that money is it gonna take for somebody to sit down and identify everything?
It's, it's gotta be done within that scope, within, within that cost. So we'll put out an RFP and say, we've got 225 to do this. If you're interested in doing it, that's, that's the cap.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we are going to, let's see, 24-050? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like, we have a motion in a second to adopt 24-049. All those in favor of adoption, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. For the hearing impaired, that was unanimous in favor. Next up is because we are deferring 24-051 until after our executive session. And then 24-052, we just deferred in. I'll, I'll get back there. 051 and 052, we've deferred. So the next one that we're gonna talk about is 24-050, which is council consideration to approve the 2024 tax collection agreement with Kuwaita County. We talked about that in the work session. Anybody needs to know any more about it, Dana is sitting there and she can tell us about your, answer your questions after we get a motion to adopt 24-050.
Make a motion to adopt 24-050.
And a second.
All right, but I'm one here, on here. Does anybody have any questions for Dana? Failing that, all those in favor of adopting 24-050, our tax collection agreement with Kuwaita County, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. That carries unanimously. Next up is 24-053, which is a first read of a variance request for buffers in the HM District, which Mike will tell us about.
Where did everybody go? So this is a request for a variance to the buffer requirements to allow grading to take place in buffers, not allowed in the required buffers. This is the series development on Atlanta Noonan Road, just north of the Kuwaita County line. And the project is being developed according to the originally approved concept plan. And that concentrates the development at the north end of the property. There's a lot of uninterrupted open space elsewhere on the property. And so in order to stay in this small footprint, they've got to do some grading. And in order to get the grading to, at the edge of the development, to match the natural grade of the land, they've got to be able to grade into the buffer. And so they proposed a variance to allow them to grade in the buffer. And they are proposing also to replant the buffer when they're done. There will be a public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting a week from tonight.
Thank you. And we have the developer here, if anybody has any questions for them. But until, but there, could I get a motion in a second, please? It is a first read, thank you. I, you know what, I'm gonna take a breath. I'm slowing down for a second. No, I'm just like, so, do I look like I need it? I may, right? Next up is a first read on 24-054, which is a small amendment to the UDC that we've been working on with Shannon here, who is going to describe that to us. This is also a first read, so there will be no action and I will not ask any other questions about it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, Kettering Plus Planning and Facilitation and our consultant team have been working with staff to revise and amend the city's Unified Development Code to ensure it is following the intent and vision of the comprehensive plan and to address items of concern specifically identified by staff, council and commission over a series of conversations that we've had with you all since March. So tonight is a first read of those revisions. Those revisions were completed in eight different sections, topical sections. Section one is the timing of open space preservation during the development process. Section two is a higher review standards to improve development feasibility. Section three were buffer requirements. Section four was subdivision of lots and minimum lot size in the rural RL District. Section five was viability and impact of residential hamlets. Section six was hamlet expansion clustering criteria. Section seven was reviewing modifying the allowed uses within the RL District. And number eight were additional changes identified by both staff and the consultant team. I know we've had a lot of conversation, are there any questions at this time?
All right, moving on. Next on the agenda will be our executive session. And the way that this works is that we will take a motion to move out of the regular meeting. We'll go off and talk about something real quick in offices. And then we will come back here, restart the regular meeting in time to close the regular, it will then be over. As usual, we will have our little town hall session at the end. If there's anything anybody wants to talk about, it's not something we've worked on today. Everybody really wants to hang out. Otherwise, we'll see you soon. And if I could, please get a motion and a second to move into executive session.
Motion to move into executive session.
We have a motion in a second, we will see you guys in a minute. Oh, wait, all of those in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye. Now, we'll see you in a minute.